So I thought tonight would be short and sweet.
Oh, no.
Did you lose power? We're still without power. We're on generator and we will be until Oct- October 2nd at 7:00.
Are you kidding?
No.
At your home or at the office?
No, at the home, but even the office had that service. I didn't go to work today. She said, "Don't bother to come in, Nancy."
So where are you now?
I'm at home.
Oh, okay. Do you have generator?
Yes.
Yes. Hope Frank doesn't think he's talking to us.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
No.
Not now. You muted yourself.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Crystal Narot wants to address the board. And so the other thing is, you may want to decide to read the letters you have from the people that had complaints, and then you can also read the two retraction letters to them. And what I'm going to... Well, I'm not sure what you have for format laid out, Elizabeth. Did you decide to tell Mr. Jones that he does not, did not provide the input that we requested?
That's what I was going to ask you, if it had come in since the 24th. Apparently not.
Say that again?
The last, um, the last communication I had from you was the 24th, and you had not received anything. So that stands, correct?
Right. But when, when Mr. Jones is on, what's the format you want to use? Are you going to point out the fact that he has not provided what the planning board requested?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's a couple of things that I'll point out as we go along. Because he has increased to 90 spaces on the plan, he's gone from a minor to a major. And that's a world of difference as to what he's going to have to do, and I'll address that when you get there.
Great.
So that's my recommendation. What, whatever you want to do is your call, of course.
And one of my questions to you is going to be, if this is now being treated as two separate amendments, has he submitted a request to, to create these parking lots?
That's supposed to be coupled as part of his original request.
But has he made that change formally?
Well, that's what is in that packet that I handed out to everyone. It shows his new submission to us.
So this submission with his grid and scratch marks on it?
Yes, exactly.
Is his official okay?
Right. So it's, it's missing the questions that we asked for.
Correct.
And, and so it does not have any detail on the parking. We don't know if he's going to plan to have it as gravel, blacktop. And so then we're going to have, have other issues so far as landscaping is concerned, but I'll address all that when you get down to the, yeah, to the parking lot.
I have, let's see, what did I come up with? A whole bunch of things about the parking, but that would be separate from what we were already dealing with, with the noise. So it was, do we follow through with the noise?
The noise is the first issue because you have the complaint letters and you have, uh, Crystal Narot would like to address the board.
Okay.
And you will not have on, it sounded like Janice is tied up someplace and she can't make it.
Oh, okay. Well, so much, Nancy, for your July 29th minutes.
I know.
And we got Jay here just for that.
I know.
Oh, he's not smiling.
Well, Sandy's smiling.
Yes, he is. I could say, that was a smile.
Frank, a quick question on the, what you reclassified. Was the original, I assume the original approved commercial site is a, was reviewed under a major?
Way back, it was, it was a major, yes. But this amendment, by the way it was initially presented to the board, there was no change in impervious surfaces.
Right.
So therefore it was a minor. But the new-
We classify amendments?
What's that?
Will we classify amendments?
Well, let me put it this way. We, by default, it's just like if I had a subdivision and I added another lot to it to brought it into major category, you'd have to be reviewing for a major status.
But I think what Jay is asking is, if it was already a major site plan, why would not subsequent amendments, however small, also be considered major?
Right.
Because the amendment that was happening to it was, it was insignificant as far as the size of it. There was no change of impervious surface by what was presented to us initially. This change of bringing up the 16,000, rather, 18,000 square feet, if it's over 4,000, what the change is, you have to look at it as if it was a major change. It's not a minor change anymore, which means when you've come to the parking area, you're going to have to need, do things that you would not have done if you left the parking lot the way it was.
Exactly.
That was already accommodated for. This is a new impact, which is what we're reviewing the, the general standards for, to see if they're impacted. This does impact them in a major category.
11, 12, 13, a whole bunch of them.
What, what did I miss?
And you've all read them, and you're all familiar with 11, 12, and 13, and what will be impacted by parking, right?
Well, what we're looking at is 10.5.
Okay.
Yes, Jay. That's, I'm looking at, all right, what I'm looking at is Jay, 10.5. It says that, uh, 10.5 point B says, "An engineering study," this is if it's now a major, "an engineering study to determine drainage requirements on the 50-year, 24-hour storm frequency." So that has got to be done. The second point is Section 13.3B. In addition to that, a generous landscape buffer between the road and the parking spot is going to be provided. Right now, there's not many trees there, and so he's going to have to plant trees because if he's going to put in a dirt parking lot in a beautiful place, it is going to be an eyesore. That's, well, part of the responsibility of the planning board is to make sure it blends in with the neighborhood, and it definitely will not blend in then. In addition to that, the grade there, it looks like it about, I'm going to say, a four to five percent grade coming down from the top parking lot, which means in, on top of that storm plan, he has to have an engineer put together. I want to see a riprap buffer because the output of that goes right into a large drainage. It goes right straight, right straight down to the ocean, and that's phosphorus transfer.
Question I add, Frank, how close to the borderline with the neighbor is that?
Five feet.
Sorry, what?
It can't be any closer than five feet.
How close is it, is the question?
Well, see, that's another thing.
On his schematic, it looks right on the border.
Well, that's the reason I asked it.
Yeah.
I mean, the plan does not look like it was engineered. It looks like someone took a ruler and went like this made scratch marks.
Exactly.
It's very, okay, so what I'm saying, what we have presented before us is, we don't have what we need to consider the, to vote on this.
Right.
I would like to see this tabled until it comes back with what we need to have. But I think the planning board should take and reiterate what we have just discussed ourselves, say, if we don't have these things, and the other things that we are missing that were significant, was the list, and there were seven things. He gave us two of them. We need to see an enforcement policy to prevent guests from parking in the driveway, to prevent a backup in Route 1. We didn't get that. We ask for security to be addressed for large events other than family unions during the nighttime events. We wanted to know what enforcement was in place for guests who had too much alcohol to consume. And then instead of giving us anything in writing, he referred us to what they have is a brochure for guests who are coming. And it's a, we said that it is fine that the hours of music allowed is on your brochure, but the specific hours of music playing and noise elimination needs to be documented during amendment. He's giving us zero documentation. It's totally unacceptable to try to consider it.
Was there, I was reading through this, Frank, and it talked about one driveway, two driveways. What is that all about?
Well, usually if you're talking about a subdivision or even a commercial plan, the state tries to make it so that you can have as few number of curb cuts onto a state highway as possible.
Okay.
I was just-
Yeah, go ahead.
For example, Dodge, take Dodge Market. Dodge Market has got one in ingress and one egress, and that's for safety purposes, so that, and it should be clearly marked. Everyone comes in one way and they strictly leave from another. Okay?
He also has his ideas of parking cars jamming them in, and 11.2D says that, or three, layout and design must provide for safe, convenient circulation of vehicles throughout the lot.
Right. But the way he's going to get around that is to merely say, those people, the clients or the customers will not be parking. It's going to be valet parking. My point there, if I'm the first person to that wedding event or whatever, and I have an emergency and I have to get my vehicle out, it's not going to happen. So that's another reason.
Frank, if, if there's no provision in the ordinance that says anything about valet, then aren't we to just judge based on what our provisions are?
It is a judgment call.
Okay.
Because it does not specifically say he might have wiggle room. So he would have to, but again, on his plot plan, he would have to be documenting the fact that the, these visitors or the attendees would not be parking in those areas. It would be strictly done by valet parking. But then you'd have to decide if you want to accept it.
Then you have to also address lighting again.
As a, as a security measure, I would say you might want to consider that that might be a problem for security purposes.
Valet parking's nice, but I can see 15 cars lined up waiting to be parked and some parking themselves on the grass, right?
Yeah. So it is 7:09. Should we convene this meeting?
I thought we just did.
Do I have a plan?
Yeah, go for it.
Uh, 7:09. I'm Elizabeth Udi, and we are meeting the Lincolnville Planning Board. This meeting is being conducted remotely using Zoom. Public can observe via Zoom, cable channel 22, the town website. We also have some members of the public that were invited to participate tonight via Zoom, and I assume they will remain muted until we're ready to bring them on. Um, planning board, please introduce yourselves verbally for the record. And there are three of us plus an alternate.
Andy Donalno. Sorry.
All right. I heard Dick Vermillion and Jay Foster speak. So you have four of us here, Nancy. Absent are Janice K. and Scott Harrison. All right. And now all my notes are spread around. So my, the agenda tonight was supposed to be the amendment to the Black Horse Inn previously approved commercial plan site, commercial site plan. The inn is located at 2254 Atlantic Highway, map 13, Lot 23. The applicant, Mr. David Jones, is requesting an amendment of change of use to allow the inn to host events, weddings, reunions, retreats, et cetera. And then now a new development that he has brought forth is to add some parking. So we'd have to talk about how we're going to handle that. I was going to ask Frank at this time, if we had yet received his intentions, the policies that he would have to present to his clients regarding the level of noise from music and the noise about loitering patrons in the parking lot, et cetera. And I think you said you have received nothing. Is that correct?
Nothing other, the only two things we've received was a list of the certified statements that the butters notified and the hand-drawn plot plan that the board has in front of them, which shows a hand-drawn and an increase of 90 parking spots.
Okay. At this time, um, last time we met, Frank read a couple of letters from neighbors who were concerned about noise. We since then received a couple more that have now been retracted. Is that right? And did we read, um, did you read Bob and Sandy Nault's letter that night?
I believe we read Alan Narot's, and we did not read Crystal Narot's. And there was Nault's was the other one. So now you have added to that, you have Kristi Nault's, and you also have the two people that live on Baloo Road. And then those two, after they had said they did not want it to happen, they withdrew on both the parties.
Okay. So do you, do I need to read these other letters?
I think the board should have the ability to hear, or the capability of hearing what was the original position of the people that said that they didn't want it to happen, and then point out the two that withdrew.
Okay. So Mr. Narot had written, "My wife and I reside at 2240 Atlantic Highway, next door to the inn, and have done since 2012, 2013. One of the main reasons we purchased it was the, for its tranquil setting and nature. Six years ago, the current owner had a wedding function at the inn, which was something we would never go through again. Cars banging and people's presence around them throughout the evening, rubbish been thrown onto our property, et cetera, plus people that smoke, a real hazard when our cabin is so close. Weddings are one main event which go on longer as it's a one whole day thing. In fact, it goes longer than that, as you have before and after wedding event itself. But the one common denominator all functions have is that apart from the car problem is noise. As I'm sure you're aware, the inn has no facility for containment of any function. That being the case, it has to be done by way of, to put it frankly, tents. That's the only way possible. In this area, I can assure all of the planning board, I've dealt with this in my early years of being involved with these types of functions over an eight-year period from weddings to christenings and everything in between. And the one thing I can stand up and say is there's no possible way to avoid the noise levels that always go with these events. The event six years ago was a one-off, of which I now find was illegal, but principles are the exact same. It makes no effect on who owns the inn, which I might add has been an inn since its construction in the late 80s along with our cabin. I don't think it's right or fair that we should be subjected to others' business practices bestowed upon us. It's also my view, over time, surrounding properties could face a devaluing situation, which again, I cannot see this as fair. One further point I feel needs bringing to your attention, the laws state, as I understand it, only homeowners up to 500 feet away are given any notification. Does the planning board think that the sound stops at this distance? I can assure it doesn't. It travels, believe me. And I speak for owners behind us, which were very much affected by the last event and have no desire to go through that again on any level. I sincerely hope the board reads my above notes and give it a fair and honest hearing, as both my wife and myself have always been happy and hoped to spend many of our years here. We love the spot we live in. And doesn't Maine have a saying? I seem to remember, "Life in Maine is the way life should be." I hope it is. I would hate to think we would be forced out by someone's business ethics. And in you, we trust to do the right thing. Sincerely yours, Alan E. Narot.
I would, I would echo that distance thing. I live a half mile from the Solador Winery, and my windows were vibrating when she first started doing that.
Really?
Really.
But I know-
I'm sorry, Frank.
Is Dave Jones on? Dave Jones, the applicant, is he on?
No. This is, this is a voice from above. Mr. Jones has not logged on as an attendee. The only log-on person right now is identified as Chris.
Crystal?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, God.
Sorry, wrong name, but you're welcome.
I like the "from above" part. Um, the letter from Crystal Narot is, "Mr. Terrio, I have thought for the last few years that nothing would be finer than to have Francesca Gigliattano to sell the Black Horse Inn and be gone from this area. She has caused a lot of expense and aggravation to my husband and myself. However, when we bought our home, it was not to be located next to wedding retreats, conferences, and other group activities. There is not adequate parking for large venues. The idea of music at any given day of the week or time, I am told, is to be allowed to midnight, and then the breakdown of said venues. These activities leading to large groups of people drinking, smoking, surrounded by woods with fire potential, and a general public with a high probability of throwing their trash cigarettes, et cetera, in the wood lines. As with a lot of Maine population, you don't need air conditioning for the biggest percent of the year. And with that, you enjoy open windows. I do not want to have to listen to large music, to music, large groups, doing activities with no alternatives. So therefore, I am definitely not in favor of this proposal. Regards, Crystal Narot." Let's see. We had from Dennis and Sarah Voda, "We are writing with input regarding the request for amendment for Black Horse Inn, allowing weddings, family reunions, retreats, and corporate functions. We echo the concerns brought forward by our neighbors, the Narots, with emphasis on excessive noise late into the evening and safety issues. Thus, we are not in favor of granting this amendment." And from Richard Baloo, "Good afternoon. I'm writing with input regarding the request for amendment for the Black Horse Inn, allowing weddings, family reunions, retreats, and corporate functions. I echo the concerns brought forward by our neighbors, the Narots, with emphasis." Those last two from the Baloo's and the Vodas have been retracted. We had a letter from Robert and Sandy Nault. "Dear Mr. David Kenny, thank you for returning my call this morning regarding the request by ZR Management regarding, regarding the Black Horse Inn. In general, we have only two concerns regarding this request. Neither should be a deal breaker if the company making the request is serious about our neighborhood and the town. Number one, noise. I'm sure weddings will involve outside bands, music, et cetera. We could request the town place the restriction on noise, music, et cetera, after 10:00 PM, if not more than 75 decibels at the property line, unless a lower number is in any code. Reference source for precedence, National Semiconductor included noise restriction in South Portland as part of a permit of its plant expansion in October of 95 to 45 decibels. We picked that number because a car driving by our neighbors made about 45 decibels driving by. To my knowledge, we never violated that level. TI purchased NSC about 2010. Our neighbors were Red Bank Residential Housing Area, about 1,800 housing units. And number two, fireworks. It's my understanding this is not legal to use fireworks in Lincolnville. We know they are used all over town. We suggest the town make business owners responsible for any use by their guests when and if they use fireworks on their property. We know that the deadwood load in the woods is, in our neighborhood, is very high, and we do not have water mains to fight any fire along Route 1. We have a great fire department, but is it reasonable to think they could control a large fire started in the woods by fireworks? Our town is small. We have limited resources. The businesses that want to be part of our community need to be good local neighbors. Is it reasonable to expect our fire department to control any large fire, or would the cost fall on the town's taxpayers in the future? Our town is growing. We suggest we need to consider how we can grow but protect our way of life. Thank you, Robert Nault." Okay. And on that note, may I ask really quickly, we have a fireworks ordinance, and they are not illegal, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Two things. First of all, point of order. Am I appointed by you to be a sitting member of the planning board for the purposes of this meeting?
Yes, you are. Do we need to vote on that?
I don't think so.
Okay. Yay. Is everybody okay with that?
Let me hear your point. The other thing is, I would make a motion that the letters just read by the chairman entered into the record.
Do I have a second?
It's on the video record, but I'd like to have it entered into the package.
Very good.
Excuse me, Nancy. I have a packet for you that I meant to give you today, but because of power failure, you weren't able to get it. So I'll get that to you on Monday.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion by Jay and seconded by Sandy to submit these letters into the record officially as documents. And I'm, I'm working on my, Robert's rules order, so I promise I'll get better at this. Do we need to vote on that? All in favor, please raise your hand or say your name. Thank you. Sandy, yes. Jay, yes. Dick, yes. Elizabeth, yes.
Is it my understanding that Mr. Jones is not logged into this meeting?
So far, that is correct.
Then I can't, we can't proceed then.
Well, that's what I was going to do, Frank. I was going to make a motion that the, given the, given the fact that we have been presented with evidence of an increased amendment, which is different than the original amendment which we heard, that additional amendment is going to require review under a different classification, which means more submission requirements are going to be required. It also has added review of the standards with other things like stormwater management, erosion being brought now into the picture because of the impervious surface. And in view of the fact that we don't have what's been requested by Mr. Jones to be presented to the board, I would make a recommendation, or at least I'll make a motion even, that we table the review of this application and request that Mr. Jones resupply the planning board with a complete package of what the amendment consists of and what it is that he's asking the board to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Jay Foster and seconded by Dick Vermillion for, to table this discussion until Mr. Jones submits all of the material that has been requested. And-
Not only the material that's been requested, but the material, it's in addition to the original application for an amendment.
And is documented that we need that material.
Correct. But he's also added 16,000 feet of impervious surface, the original amendment, which wasn't there. And that brings into bear further review, not only of the reclassification, but also of the things that will come about as a result of the additional to 16,000 square feet, stormwater management and erosion control.
And more, lighting, traffic, space.
That's up to the board to determine what standards under an amendment are going to be pertinent to that amendment request. That's what Section 18 stipulates.
And we don't need to do that tonight until we actually have his formal submission, correct?
Correct.
So Janice K. has joined us.
Hi, Janice.
But I think she's still muted.
Good timing, Janice.
So do we now take a vote? Oh, I, I do have one question before we vote on Jay's motion. Should we give Crystal a chance to say her piece, or would she like to wait until Mr. Jones has joined us after we continue this discussion?
I would suggest the, the agenda published by the town was for the review of this amendment this evening. If the applicant is not present, the board is in session, and we are discussing the amendment as the agenda called for and was published, and that we are in an open meeting. So if the chairman were to determine that somebody who's logged into the Zoom meeting wishes to discuss it, then I would say that it's up to us to determine whether or not she, or he, she, can or not. Firstly, I have no problem with him.
Okay. Go ahead.
The applicant would have the ability, video, at his own leisure, to determine what took place while he was not at the meeting that he was attending.
Okay. Go ahead, Sandy.
If I may, I would, I would allow the person to speak, just if nothing else, to avoid having them come back and do it again.
So if I can ask, David, could, can we talk with Crystal and ask her if she wants to make her presentation this evening?
I'll bring her over to you.
Great. Thank you.
This is good continuity for the letters you've already read as well. So it's makes it one solid continual.
Yeah.
It'll also be part of the video record.
Am I on?
Yes, you are, Janice.
Who are you?
Sorry, I'm late. I had a problem and I couldn't get to my computer.
Crystal, are you on? Can you hear us?
He's muted.
He's muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My questions were really going to be about the policies that obviously he hasn't submitted. So it's really, I guess at this point, I'm kind of where you are. Wait until he has what he has been asked to submit. The parking lot issue sounds like a whole nother adventure, so I guess I would be willing to wait until that next go-round, but that was really where my questions lie.
Okay. I understand.
Yes.
What is your role in this, Crystal?
My role is that I live next door to the Black Horse Inn.
That's good, okay.
Crystal's was one of the letters I read went through that wedding several years ago.
I'm all for business and promoting people to, I mean, we need the business. But when you live next door to things and from the past, how things have been handled, not that it's a new owner, and I get that, but if he hasn't even submitted what's been already asked, it gives me even more worried that it's going to be kind of not a friendly thing to be living next door to in a residential home.
And Crystal, do you understand that Mr. Jones has not purchased the property yet?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay, good. Because I would hope that if this all, you know, went in his favor, that you guys could work out a much better relationship than you have now. But at this point, we are going to vote on tabling this until our next meeting.
Absolutely.
And hope that Mr. Jones submits what he wants to, if he wants us to continue with this.
I think you need to get Janice on board here of what you have discussed and motion on the table.
Jay, do you mind?
Doing what?
Reviewing your motion, so Janice can understand where we are.
Oh, yeah, I was moving that we, given the circumstances and the fact that the applicant is not present at the meeting, which was a posted agenda item by the town for a planning board meeting, and also given the information we've been given about the change in the amendment that we were to review, I requested the board table the application review this evening until we can get a full, complete amendment presented to us to exactly what it is in the post review under the ordinance.
I understand.
And that was seconded, and so now we are to vote on it. Janice, how do you vote?
So a yes vote is to table it till the next meeting.
Correct.
Then I vote yes.
Sandy?
Table it till whenever.
Dick?
Yeah.
And Jay?
I think the next meeting, it's on the record, might be, because we not have the information by the next meeting if he's not ready for that. But at the next available time, when he has a complete plan to present, I would say yes.
Okay, that's a good point.
Just, I'm sorry, really good time. I have something to say. Well
All right, we're unanimous, Nancy, thank you.
If he does not provide what we're looking for, I will not reschedule him to the planning board.
That makes sense, thank you.
Kind of my point.
Is there any communication from this point with him on a one-to-one basis explaining what is required?
The last conversation we had was when he emailed me that hand sketch drawing, and I told him that, you know, he does not have what we need to have to make a vote on this thing.
And I made all these notes about professional contractors.
So Frank, he still planning to buy it, or is it a moot point?
We don't know.
We don't have no idea.
Can I make a point on that?
Yes, please.
Bothering me from day one, when it was presented to the board that he had not purchased the Black Horse Inn. An individual who comes to the planning board with an application needs to have standing to be in front of the board. If he's not the owner of the property that's being asked to be amended, I'm not sure we can hear his application.
I know he had an offer in on it, but had not closed on it.
He had, I think he had a purchase.
Is it a purchase agreement?
I think he had a purchase agreement, purchase and sale agreement.
Well, that at a minimum, we should know about if he has that or not.
Correct.
I believe he did.
That's not ownership. That's not standing, that's not
It's not legal standing.
Right.
Well, perhaps he doesn't want to buy it if he doesn't get this passed, because it's possible that he's buying it for his daughter, who is the wedding planner. And so I think we should find that out.
Well, the point is, the person standing before the planning board asking for an application to be approved needs to have legal standing. And I'm not sure this individual does, if he doesn't own the property.
How do we establish that?
No, that, Jay, he has resisted us on every request we made of him. And everything was a verbal answer without, yes, I'll provide that documented. It was reiterated, we need it documented. He actually poo-pooed everything as if it was nothing. Does that sound fair?
Yes, it does.
I'm trying to make it fair to everybody concerned and in all fairness to Mr. Jones. There was a problem with his not having legal standing before the board. What's that noise? If somebody objects to the approval, if it were to happen on the grounds that he didn't have standing when the board approved it, it's in his best interest.
Well it only could have been approved with a contingency, Jay. It could not have been approved, yes, you can go ahead and do it. Unless he had legal standing.
It could be done that way. But the point needs to be made in some manner, he needs to have legal standing to be before the board with this application, because he's not the owner of the property.
And we have a specific provision for standing. So, okay. What is our next step? And if it is to adjourn, we don't want to do that yet, because Nancy has some minutes she would like to have us approve. Pardon me?
At least get one of them done.
I think you can get two of them done.
Really? Okay.
Because you have Janice, Sandy and Jay are all here.
Are we doing minutes?
Yes.
Good to say goodnight, all you good people.
Frank, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll call you tomorrow, Janice.
Okay, thank you.
Say goodnight, Frank.
Bye now. Night, Frank.
Good night, Frank.
July 29.
Okay, you guys, the minutes of July 29, Jay, Sandy and Janice were present. I was not, Dick was not. So you guys have to decide if you liked these minutes.
Yeah, I've been through those, and I don't see anything that didn't actually take place or didn't correctly recorded, or I don't see any typos, so I would be in favor of approving the minutes of July 29. We did have a quorum that evening. So if, yeah, all three of us are here, so we could approve those minutes.
If you're making the motion, I second it.
How did the three of you vote on approving these minutes?
I would approve.
I approve.
And Jay approves.
Right.
How is it that Lately says it? The motions, the, wait, was it the minutes stand approved? I don't know, she has a term she uses, and I just want, I aspire to be as cool as she is. And then now we have the minutes of September 9. And I do have a couple of things, they're very minor. Line 43, no, no, no. Line 45. Dee Jones said that his daughter, who took courses in hotel, it's actually his daughter-in-law, he said.
Oh, okay, I thought it was his daughter.
And line 65. Well, let's see, if we're going for typos, let's do line 52. Those would be decibels of sound, not decimals. Don't you love word correct? And line 65, Chair Udi made a motion. Actually, Sandy made the motion and Janice, I'm sorry, Scott seconded it. I did not make the motion to adjourn.
Sandy made the motion?
Yes.
Just a quick question on line 54, as far as it is entered into the record. I don't know exactly what the video would show, but did the board suggest that Dee Jones write up an event proposal contract including rules? Or did we request it?
Requested.
That's a little bit stronger than suggested, and if it's in
Very much so.
Board requested that, I think it should reflect that.
We did request it.
Yes, we did. Was there anything else? Did anyone see anything else?
I've not read them, but I go along with whatever you folks say.
Okay.
Looks good to me.
Do I have a motion to accept these minutes of September 9?
So moved.
Second.
With the corrections.
With the corrections, yes. All in favor of accepting these with corrections. I, Dick, yeah, there you go. Dick, you don't talk much.
I don't have to.
Now, is it my understanding that you have some experience in construction and that sort of thing?
Yes, I do.
Contractor, so you should have a lot to add to some of these conversations.
We just built buildings. We didn't do a lot of this stuff in front of planning boards, so no, I know. But I'll learn.
Me too.
You guys always send the engineering staff to the planning board, right? Not the builders. That's why we get Gartley and Dorsky, not the guy that pounds the nails. That's the
What? Jay, you didn't like this diagram?
No.
I had a real, I had a real problem with it.
Yeah, I think we all did. I do have a question. I guess it's, I don't know if it's procedural or, but this entire video is out there, even the moments prior to actually convening the meeting, is that right?
David?
David.
David.
I'm here.
Yeah, so
Yes.
Okay, so even our private, sort of private conversations?
There's no private conversations. The meetings are we can go back and on YouTube and edit off the start of the meeting to, you know, when you're saying hi to each other, waiting for everybody to log on. That occurs relatively slowly, because yours truly does it. But you, once it's, once you log on to Zoom, you can assume anything and everything you say is out there for public consumption.
Okay. So that's something we should all maybe keep in mind in the future.
Well, in terms of what we do via Zoom in relation to what we do in an actual meeting in the town office, as we come in and sit down at our respective chairs in the town office, we're talking to each other. We're discussing things back and forth, whether it be personal or not. But then the chair officially brings the meeting to order. And if whatever chair decides to do that, that's when the video and the audio are turned on. When the vote is taken to adjourn the meeting, that's when the video and the audio are turned off. So everything that's said after that is personal. It's a little bit different with the Zoom thing, but I would suggest that if we want the meeting official record to be the meeting, that we adhere to that when it's brought into a session and then when it's adjourned, it should comply, the record should compile the record. The video, I don't know what we need to do with that, but the the record should be when the chairman brings us to order and when the board determines that we're adjourned. That's the record.
Yeah, I understand.
I would agree. And if you want for future meetings, I can mute everyone from the master control until the chairman waves or gives me some sort of signal that you want to be on. Obviously, won't be able to exchange pleasantries and restaurant reviews and whatever else.
Okay. And that's something all of you should give some thought to, we can decide together about that, but to me, it would be more formal, go ahead.
Don't let all this power go to your head, David.
I thought he was going to say, power to my head.
As far as the Zoom goes, I am waiting the day when the COVID restrictions are lifted so that I don't have, no offense, I don't have to attend planning board meetings or broadband committee meeting.
I wondered how you get so much done. Do you ever sleep?
Sleep's overrated.
No.
And weren't you just recently also appointed to the harbor or something or other? Like you didn't have enough to do, David?
Yeah, we're digressing into Dave Kennyness instead of planning board. I'd suggest you adjourn and we end the meeting.
We adjourn. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I don't.
Good night.